Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the August 1st Planning Commission Work Session. We appreciate everybody's cooperation meeting in here today. Ms. Adamoche?
Good afternoon, everyone. We have two cases on the agenda, and they were presented by our planners. The first case is UP 2314, a conversion of existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. And the second one is, of course, for a restaurant. We're going to ask that you consider reordering the schedule to allow the, in the public hearing, to allow the restaurant be heard first because we have a lot of speakers for the duplexes. Perhaps we can let that, if we consider that. But the first case, of course, is the, for the work session, is the conversion.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. My name's Valerie Melzon. I'm a senior planner with the city of Portsmouth. The application before you today is a request for a use permit to convert an existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling or duplex at 5520 Briarwood Lane. The subject property is owned by Robert Jones and is zoned general residential, or GR. The property is approximately .3 acres in size. It contains a one-story, 2,788-square-foot, detached, single-family dwelling that was constructed in 1965. The existing single-car driveway can currently accommodate at least two off-street vehicle parking spaces. The surrounding area consists of residential uses. Single-family residential properties are located to the north, south, west, and east of the property, and all are zoned general residential. An approved use permit is required for two-family dwellings within the general residential zoning district. The applicant is proposing to convert an existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling by dividing the interior space of the structure into two dwelling units. This will be done within the footprint of the existing structure, and no changes will be made to the exterior of the structure.
Say that part, last part again, please.
This will be done within the footprint of the existing structure, and no changes will be made to the exterior of the structure.
Okay.
Unit A, that is, the unit facing the street, and it's shown in blue on the floor plan, will be approximately 1,800 square feet in size and will include three bedrooms and two bathrooms and the garage. Unit B is located to the rear of the structure. It's shown in orange on the floor plan. It will be approximately 1,000 square feet in size and will include two bedrooms and one bathroom. The use-specific standards for two-family dwellings require that the principal entrance of at least one unit shall face the street from which the building derives its street address. This standard will be satisfied as the existing front door facing Briarwood Lane will serve as the principal entrance for unit A. Unit B will be accessed through an existing door to the rear of the structure. The existing driveway will be extended eastward to create a double-car driveway. The driveway with the proposed driveway extension will accommodate the four off-street vehicle parking spaces that are required for two-family dwellings. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as appropriate for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential uses. Staff recommends the approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The proposal aligns with the goals of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. The proposed two-family dwelling will be compatible with the surrounding development and will increase the supply of income-diverse housing options within the neighborhood. To my knowledge, the planning department has received two public comments regarding this application, and these comments have been provided to the planning commissioners. I will now stand by for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Melzon. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Jaggs?
My concern is that this is a established, single-family residential neighborhood. What was the logic from the planning department in recommending approval?
The logic in the planning--
I can't hear you.
The logic for the planning department recommending approval was the comprehensive plan is recommending a diversity in housing types in the community. The zoning ordinance allows a duplex in a GR district with a use permit. It's an existing, single-family home that's 2,800 square feet on a 13,000-square-foot lot. A duplex, meaning two units, would be, would not be a negative thing for that community.
Apparently, some people in the community don't share your interpretation of that. And I have to be quite honest, personally, I look at this as, to me, it's spot zoning, to me.
You're not zoning anything.
I know, but it's spot something. It's spot because we're getting a use permit to do this. This is, in my opinion, this is just my opinion. It's a single-family dwelling neighborhood, and to me, that takes away from the character. That's just my opinion.
I, thank you. I do have just a couple of questions. You mentioned that there were parking spaces already assigned to the, to the property. Building official, engineering came back as a nine-foot by 18-foot long. Does that meet that requirement as it sits right now?
Right now, there are two nine-foot by 18-foot parking spaces that can fit on that single-lane driveway. When he extends it, he's doubling it or more to do four nine-foot by 18-foot parking spaces. Yes, it will meet that.
Okay, so with the extension, it would meet the requirement of two vehicles for, for the duplex for each unit?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And, and the develop, and the property owner is already agreeing to this?
Yes, that's his conceptual site plan, and yeah, it include, and he was made aware that the four parking spaces, off-street parking spaces, are mandatory for the conversion to the two-family dwelling.
Okay. And then, a second question, if I can. So, in the write-up by some of the citizens, they've mentioned that this has already been marketed and, and rented out as a duplex in the past. Is, is there any truth to that that staff can maybe elaborate on?
We looked, and it was not listed as on the market. So, when we looked on several rent and real estate websites, it was listed off-market. So, how it has been advertised in the past, we don't know.
So, past, you wouldn't, you've done nothing to understand what maybe the past may have been, but I think, I think I saw it on Zillow as a--
Off-market.
As off-market, but as two separate entities, a unit A and a unit B.
Correct. Yeah, we were only able to find unit B, but yeah, correct.
So, so you say you only found one--
Yeah.
--unit, but not A and B?
So, Commissioner Hines, it was removed from Zillow on the 15th of July. It was originally put on Zillow the 19th of June.
As both an A and a B? I thought that's what I saw.
Yeah, and then, because I looked, I looked it up in RAIN, which is the actual multiple listing service, and there was no history in RAIN, which is our multiple listing system, showing there was any rental advertisement. And that's most likely due to the fact that he's handling his own property management. But it was on apartments.com. I did find it still active on there.
As an A and a B?
I believe so, yeah. I'm looking for the email now because I sent it to myself.
Okay.
Yeah, apartments.com. They've got it as Churchill and Brick Rancher duplex, near Interstate's Unit A, 2,150 monthly rent, three-bedroom, two-bath study spacious. So, it was on apartments.com. 1,800 square foot. That's the only one that, but I didn't like beat up the Internet looking for it. I just did the first search in our real estate system, and it didn't show up. And I said, okay, well, most likely it would show up on Zillow or apartments.com, or, and that's where I found it, on apartments.com.
So, so, for clarity's sake, they have already been operating this as a duplex--
No, it's--
--in terms of rental without proper use permit?
I don't know if they've been operating it. I saw an advertisement for it.
Well, they, they had the intent of doing it, in other words, maybe not doing it, but an intent of--
Correct, but I want to, you know, be fair. I saw the advertisement, yeah.
I mean, I do too, but naturally, I'm just trying to make sure that I'm understanding that, you know, this is, naturally, if it's been acting as such for this period of time or attempting to act as such, it's pertinent to this discussion.
Right, right.
I think so. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, unless Ms. Barnes, Commissioner Barnes, you got any? The fire hydrant. So, when they extend that driveway, how close will that make it to the fire hydrant? Because aren't there some rules with regard to parking near a fire hydrant?
Yes, I'm not, engineering just did a preliminary review of the driveway extension, and preliminarily said it looks like there wouldn't be any issues, but I'm not sure about that, and they didn't provide any comments about that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Yes, didn't we get feedback from, from the fire department?
We did. They indicated there was no fire concerns. Let me just check that. Let me check really quick. I believe we did hear back that there was no concerns.
Yeah.
Yeah, department responded, no comment.
Well, I was really, look, feedback from them since the question is raised about the fire hydrant.
I do have another question--
Commissioner Hines, yeah.
--if I can. Thank you, Madam Chair. The pathway to unit B, is there actually going to be some sort of ADA component of that? I didn't see it spelled out, so--
It's not definite, and there's, it's, he mentioned that, the owner mentioned that he may in the past make a concrete path, but there are also steps going up to that back porch, so it would not be ADA compliant. But I did ask permits and inspections about it, and they said it does not need to have an ADA-compliant entrance unless it is advertised as being ADA-compliant.
So, there is no, so if the intent of the use is to rent, is there not something in the Fair Housing requirements that require handicap accessibility?
If I may?
You're a real estate--
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It just says that you have to provide reasonable accommodations for them in the Fair Housing.
Right, so getting to the unit B, is that not considered a fair and reasonable accommodation?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I would think it is because--
Yes, if they request it.
Right, so, but if, to market it, I would imagine that would still be something that would, should fall into some sort of regulation under Fair Housing. That'd be just as simple as me saying, no, I can't rent unit B to someone in a wheelchair. You know, it would be the same level of discrimination, in my opinion, as saying, you know, I don't like how much money you make, or whatever the case might be.
That's different from residential.
Would it not be running in the same, if you're basically renting it out?
Yeah, it's different from residential.
It would be under reasonable accommodations.
I think what we did, this issue was raised, and, and what we, after researching with permits and inspections, if the, the owner does not advertise it as being ADA acceptable, then it doesn't have to be ADA accessible. Like, like, your, your house doesn't have to be ADA accessible unless you make it ADA accessible, or unless you, if you want to, if they want to advertise it as being ADA accessible, then they'd have to make it ADA accessible. But right now, there's no, as far as we know, there's no rules that require that it be ADA accessible.
I understand a house doesn't have to be. That's my personal, single-family house, right?
Yeah.
I could understand that. If I have a choice to say, I'm going to put a ramp up, you know, make it ADA accessible. However, this is now becoming a rental.
Yeah.
Does that requ, does that meet a different legal standard, is my question?
We can defer to that.
Because at that point, you're going to exclude anybody that has a handicap from having the fair and equitable opportunity to rent this portion of the house.
Can I jump in for one second on what I, the way I see it, and I'm not the expert, but having been on the Housing Authority Board, I think I can speak to it a little bit. As long as this property is not receiving federal grant money, then the property owner deciding to make these into two rental units can do what he wants with his property. As long as he's not getting tax credits for having improved his property for handicap accessible, or getting grants from HUD for this, he is not restricted to having to comply with AD, what?
ADA.
ADA. He's not, he's not, you know, pigeonholed into that. That's my, that's my interpretation, and now you can take over, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not going to hold myself out as an expert on this particular situation, but I, I would say that what Julie and Ms. Jaggs said does make sense to me. Also, that the Fair Housing Act has different applicability depending on the size of a development and the number of units involved. So, it does not seem strange to me that you would be able to have a duplex that's not ADA compliant.
I have--
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one more question. What about short-term rentals? Are they allowed in this neighborhood? Have you all thought about that?
I'll have to defer to Julie or Jocelyn for this, I'm not sure.
That would depend on the property owner. Once we give it, if it gets a use permit, then it would depend on the property owner.
Okay. Does Portsmouth have a lot of rules and regulations with regard to short-term rentals? Okay, so it's possible that if this were to go through, he could use that back in-law suite, if you will, as a short-term rental?
In theory, yeah.
Okay.
Well, so--
We don't--
There, zoning does not issue zoning permits for short-term rentals, or, but I guess if it is approved as a duplex, the, who they rent it to and for how long would not necessarily be regulated by the zoning department.
Property owner.
Right, I underst, I was just asking in general, are short-term rentals allowed?
And our, our answer to that would be that we do not regulate short-term rentals--
Okay.
--at this time.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Commissioner Jaggs?
Yes. Do, do, do we know if we have approved in the past other use permits for duplex rentals in this particular neighborhood?
Yes, it's, it's the whole--
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about there are actually some people in this neighborhood as we speak who have obtained use permits by the city of Portsmouth--
Mm-hmm.
--to do duplex rentals.
So, in Belvedere specifically, since it's only a couple blocks new, but within a half-mile, it's still zone GR, and there are duplexes. So, if the zoning ordinance indicated that they needed use permits at that time, then the answer would be yes.
Right, but for Belvedere proper?
For Belvedere, no, but, but, yeah, and also, Belvedere's very small. I just wanted to preface with that, yes. So, no, not in Belvedere.
Right, thank you.
In the, in the staff report, I do, which one I make a comment if I can. That was very helpful because there was a lot of discussion surrounding it. The last time, we talked about duplexes within the certain radiuses. So, thank you for providing that. None within a quarter-mile. Zero, just to give you context on that. And only four and a half a mile. So, it is definitely getting into the character of this area, especially in a quarter-mile radius. So, just think that's an actual, very good piece of documentation. So, thank you all for putting that together.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Melzon, I'm sorry.
(laughing).
Ms. Next case is downtown.
All right. Good afternoon, planning commissioners.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
I am Amy Murvine, senior planner with the city of Portsmouth. This use permit application request before you today is to operate an entertainment establishment on an approximately 0.619-acre parcel at One High Street in Suite 4. The property is located in the D1-T6 zoning sub-district. The building was constructed in 1914 and contains approximately 75,522 square feet, and Suite 4 contains approximately 31,931 square feet. The property is occupied by a six-story, mixed-use structure that abuts Water Street. The building is currently occupied by residential and office space. Former uses include a restaurant, retail space, and a microbrewery. Also, just as a reference, it was the Legend Brewing Company. I'm sure most of you guys knew where that was. The surrounding area consists of commercial and residential-type land uses. To the west across Water Street is a government building, Water Street parking garage, and condominium, Zone D1-T6. To the east are Walking Pass, the Seawall, and Hog Island Fresnel Lens Display, Zone D1-T6. Mouthful. To the north is the High Street Ferry Landing, the Seawall, and Walking Pass, Zone D1-T6. To the south is the Water Street Parking Lot and Green Open Space, Zone D1-T6. The applicant's proposal is to open a restaurant that serves a blend of Caribbean and Cajun-Creole dishes and to include entertainment such as karaoke and live bands. The proposed operating hours of the restaurant will be Monday, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Tuesday through Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. with approximately 20 employees. Time on the River is proposing to offer karaoke in the evenings between the hours of 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m., as well as offer live music. Entertainment will be available inside the establishment and, weather permitting, have small live bands or string instruments play outside in the enclosed patio area during the spring and summer months. The outdoor entertainment will be seasonal and contingent on the weather. The enclosed outdoor dining area, which is located on city property, has been approved by the city. As stated by the applicant, the goal of Time on the River Restaurant is to offer an experience that all patrons can enjoy. There are no plans to modify the exterior of the building or outdoor area at this time. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for Mixed-Use Downtown Land Uses. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the applicant's use permit request. With the recommended conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and is appropriate in this location. To my knowledge, no public comments were received regarding this application. I will now sit by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Murvine.
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioners?
Yes, did you notice that? I checked a little bit.
You had, you were funny.
Yes, I have a question.
Yeah.
When I looked at the notifications that were put out, I was concerned that the notification went in an aggregate to the condominium, not to the individual persons in each condominium. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so it was sent to the association who basically owns the property.
But do you not think that the individuals who live in those condominiums should be given notification also? I'm just trying to understand logically.
The notification that, that Amy provided is in line with what the state code requires.
So, the state code says that if you are aware of the actual individual condominium owners, that their rights are superseded by the association, and therefore, you don't have to inform the individual condominium persons. Is that correct? Am I saying that correct?
It, I don't believe that the state code uses those exact words.
Ms. Melo, could you--
Can you speak to that?
It says to notify the owners of the property. That's the legal requirement.
The owners of the property? What about the owners of the, the units within the property?
Yeah, I mean, I think the condominium association serves the purpose.
But suppose they don't give notification to the individual condominium persons? I mean--
That's a big sign out front.
Well, everybody may not look at the sign, but if you have to pay your monthly condominium fees, I would think that you are deserving of the right to be notified that there is going to be some type of entertainment that may be going on that was not going on before. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
It seems like if I'm, if I'm Miriam, I'm in a unit, just because I'm in the association, seems like I should still be able to get notification of this particular venue that the owner wants to put forth, because I do live in, in your facility.
Sure, and, and there's nothing that precludes us from providing broader notice than the, than the code requires, and maybe that's something that, you know, we can, we can look at in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I would recommend that. Just because they have an association does not mean that their rights as individuals who are paying into that association--
Right.
--that they should not be informed as to what is going to happen where their residence is. That's my point.
Yeah. I would note in this one, it's the exact footprint of Legend. So, the people who live there are familiar with it, I think, in general, but I, I understand you at a relevant point.
You understand where I'm coming from on that? Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioners, any questions?
Pretty straightforward on that one.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Murvine. Ms. Adamoche, anything else?
Just a few comments. Earlier, I, I made suggestion that in the public hearing, we reorder the schedule to allow the restaurant to go first because the other case may have a lot of speakers. The video team has alerted us that they will only be here till 3:00 because they go to another function. Hopefully, the meeting won't go beyond 3:00. At the last meeting, we had met here with Boza, and one, one of the six cases they had mentioned, they denied, they had reviewed, they denied it, and it's gone to Circuit Court. And I'll keep you abreast of, of what goes on with that. And we did receive some information from the applicant, from the childcare center. He had a very broad summary of EPA evaluation of the general area, not a site-specific information. So, that's generally, you know, what I had to say. Oh, and we need to vote whether you want to continue in this room. There are some people that don't want to continue in this room, some people do. The video capabilities are better in the chamber, but since we do it twice, does it matter? But, and there was some concern raised. I think you should vote amongst yourselves and decide, do you want to stay in this room, or only come when we have a joint meeting, or do you always want to be in council, in the chambers? And that's all I have.
Commissioners, any thoughts? I know you have--
Well, you know I have thoughts, because I think we should just have everything in chambers. That's my first thought, but specifically, are you able to tell us what went to Circuit Court?
Well, I can send you the copy of it. As a case on Pearl Street, they asked for a variance to go from, go down to five feet, and they said no. But I'll send you the case if, if you want, if you want a copy of what was submitted to Circuit Court.
Or you can send it email, I mean--
I'll do.
Okay.
No problem.
Regarding where we meet, I don't really care, honestly. However, if, when we do have the public hearing pieces, it's a little bit more comfortable, I think, for maybe the people that show up. A little bit more space, spread out, those types of things that maybe need to be factored in our, our decision there. So, regarding to going to Circuit Court, I know there was some discussion about potentially bringing back changes to the zoning ordinance. Is that something that we could potentially expedite and ask for some sort of maybe stay of that case while we put together that language? Because it seems like there might be some appetite here to make that change, and there might be some appetite from the Board of Zoning Appeals, especially since they're turning them down because it's such a frequent request that they feel that they're changing the zoning ordinance. And that's the reason why they're getting turned down, according to the chairman. So, is that something that we should look at potentially as a, instead of going through the cost of litigations and things of that nature, maybe we can say--
They've already filed the case. It's in Circuit Court now. I mean--
Is that something that--
Is it something that--
It's, it's been communicated to the plaintiffs that the city is considering changing the, the rules in that area. So, right now, the case is not moving immediately, but it, you know, at a certain point, it will.
Must be me. So, so has the case been heard yet?
No.
Will our chair, chairperson be required to give testimony?
Of, of the planning commission?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I'm just--
No, the planning commission's not, not involved at all.
Okay.
The only thing we're involved in is if we decide to make a zoning ordinance change that could potentially keep us out of court. So, is that something we can do to potentially expedite the zoning ordinance change that could potentially keep us from the--
Going to board the case.
--cost of, of your time and whoever else's time on city attorney staff if there's an appetite for us to make that change? if there's an appetite for us to make that change anyway, that we can say, hey, plaintiff, give us 45 days and then bring us back the ordinance if there is an appetite for us to change the ordinance?
That might get you in water, hot water, but I am not an attorney. Let me be quiet.
You know, that's concerning because if we were going to make that change anyway, like we essentially discussed...
I didn't know we were going to decide to make a change.
Yeah.
We did not, but we did ask for language to come back as potential language from the attorney during our shared meeting at the last meeting. Now, the board did not take any action or anything of that nature, so...
So my approach was to investigate what other localities were doing and then submit perhaps a recommendation. I had not put this on the fast track at all, you know. I didn't hear that at the last meeting.
Well, it was my understanding there was consensus amongst both sides that they'll at least have language brought back to us. And what I am saying is that if there is a way to save the city funding, both in real dollars and in opportunity dollars...
The language that I'm hearing you say is that you changed the ordinance to allow residents by right to reduce the side yard... You reduced their side yards. That's what I'm hearing.
That was the discussion, yes, ma'am. And if we actually did take on that as a group, and again, that's a decision of the group, not as above me or any one of the single of us, it would reduce the number of Board of Zoning Appeals all the way down to nine from over a period of two years' time, which then would make that less, I guess you could say, frequent as what the chairman's discussion about the fact they keep voting them down because they don't want to feel like they're by effect changing the zoning ordinance. So until this gets wrestled with and they keep denying them, they're going to keep on having this issue of, you know, going to Circuit Court every time we decided by 2 feet. And maybe that's something we can look at. Again, I'm only one member.
We can bring you back some options, Stan. I mean, it sounds like you're saying you want to change, but I don't hear a consensus amongst everyone, so...
Madam Chair, may I call for a consensus of moving...
Not yet, no consensus yet because I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Jiggett.
For our city attorney, when you, once you take it to court, they can ask for, what's the word I want? If the court rules in their favor, aren't there financial assessments that they can award them? I know I'm not using the right word, but I think you know where I'm coming from.
Yeah, you're talking about damages of some sort.
Yes, yes.
Not really in this context. In the BZA, an appeal of a BZA decision, the remedy would simply be to effectively grant the variance that BZA denied.
Without...
Not a lot of damages or punitive damages or anything.
They never rule and award damages.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, okay, I just want to know.
Not even reasonable attorney fees?
I don't know how attorneys fee stands.
I would imagine you're going to get reasonable attorney fees at probably $200 to $300 an hour for that type of work.
You know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure that an appeal of a variance decision can result in attorney's fees. But it is an issue to be resolved. I agree with what you're saying.
If nothing else, I would like to ask for a consensus for staff to bring us back some options. That's all I'm going to ask for at this point. Not a number, but maybe to be added at a work session in the near future.
Do you want the Boza to come back or just...
Just the planning staff to make their recommendation and have a couple of different options maybe to present that might solve some of these issues that the Board of Zoning Appeals brought to us.
Message received.
Are you sure you want it from her? Or do you want it from our city attorney?
I imagine anything she brings to us will be vetted by the city staff, by the city attorney.
She would be practicing law without a license.
Oh, my goodness. Anything else, Commissioner?
Do we need to take a vote on that portion?
Yes, take a vote.
A consensus?
I don't think you can vote during a...
No, take a consensus. He wants a consensus, we're going to give him a consensus.
A consensus on...
Staff to bring us some options back at a reasonably short period of time to address the concerns brought by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Excellent, received.
Consensus?
Consensus, yes, I'm fine with that.
You didn't ask me.
Are you okay with that?
We know where you stand.
I wasn't at the meeting last month, so I, you know, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay, Commissioners, is there anything else?
Are you going to stand here?
Oh, I'm sorry. So we need a consensus on whether we will continue to have the work session in here or if you would like to go back to the city council chambers and keep it as it was before. I have no preference.
I'm with whatever staff.
Well, since you all don't have preference, I do. Let's take it back to the city council chambers.
I mean, I like it in here because it makes it...
Also, you do have a preference.
Lord have mercy.
Y'all want me to call the roll and just ask?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
What was that, Ms. Jackson?
I was just saying we could call the roll and y'all could tell me yes or no if y'all want to continue to have it in the chamber or not roll because we can't take a vote.
Can't take a vote, it's a consensus.
And so it'd be just a little bit more order.
Yes, go ahead.
Is that fine?
I have no problem with how you want to handle that. However, is there any sort of undue stress that either the location or any situation causes for staff?
It is.
Is the question that I...
He just said so when he came in.
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead.
When it's in here, are they able to record it?
Yes, but the quality of the recording is better in council chambers.
That's what he told us before we started.
There's no problem in recording. And this is just a dry run. And you don't vote in here. But the important, well, this is an important meeting too. But the most important meeting is in council chambers.
So in other words, it does cause a potential of quality concern to people watching at home?
The last meeting was recorded in here. We were in here, correct? So if you watched the meeting, you could see...
I lived it, I'm okay with that.
So it wasn't a big... Because if you guys recall, before COVID, we were in this room, we did it. It was never a discussion about going to another room. We were always in here.
I just want to please you to say...
If I may, I just find that, especially when you have new commissioners, and they may be a little introverted because it does, we do have turnover. And I think this environment lends itself to conversation a little bit better than it does in the chambers. But I don't, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Well, if it doesn't matter to the rest of y'all, can we just let me have my way on this? I'm an only child, what can I tell you?
Oh, really?
You say you guessed that, huh?
Regina, do you want to see...
Can't you do a consensus where somebody says yes or no?
Yes, I can't, can I do, I can't do that.
A consensus in work session?
We're just doing a consensus. We're not voting, we're just doing a consensus.
So I can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we want a consensus as to whether or not we want to keep it here in the conference room or move to chamber. So I'm asking, who wants to keep it in the conference room? And if you want to keep it here in the conference room, then you say yes. And then I can take it from there.
Okay.
Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Jiggett, keeping it here in the conference room?
No.
Backston?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Page, Commissioner Hines, keeping it here in the conference room?
Abstain.
Because he knows today, like, you are.
I really don't have a preference, but I'll go with, sure, yes, why not?
Okay.
So we have four people that say yes, they want to continue to keep it in the conference room.
Or not.
Did you hear what he just said? Or not?
Or not, honestly, I really don't have a preference.
Well, everybody is not here. If y'all don't have a preference, the next meeting, we'll let y'all know where y'all are.
You did all that to let us know, you will decide.
I'm going to let Ms. Jackson make the determination.
Because we got big projects.
You can make the determination.
Okay, I'm fine. Commissioners, I think this concludes our work session.
I do have one thing, and I'm sorry. I did receive an email from Commissioner Page, and he resigned from the board.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's what you were saying about turn...
Well, that's not what triggered it, but there tends to be a little bit of turnover.
It's 6:00 now.
Yes.
So Commissioners...
And Commissioner Curry, I'm sorry. And Commissioner Curry will not be here today.
But he's just not here today?
Correct.
Okay, all right, all right. Commissioners, if there's nothing else, then this concludes our August 1, 2023 work session. We will convene for our regular meeting session this afternoon in the city council chambers. Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, August 1, 2023, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Five members of the planning commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the July 18, 2023 public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of the minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the July 18, 2023 public hearing. You will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of 4 and 1 abstention. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, September 5, 2023, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing, 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their September 12, 2023 public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item, U.P.-23-14 Belvedere. Robert Jones requests a use permit to convert an existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling on approximately 0.3-acre parcel located at 5520 Briarwood Lane with a proposed density of 6.7 dwelling units per acre. The property is in the General Residential GR zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for low-to-medium-density, single-family residential. The property is owned by Robert Jones and is further described as tax map 797, parcel 14. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Robert Jones.
Sir, could you speak into the microphone just a little bit more, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
God bless you. Good afternoon, my name is Robert Jones, and this is my wife Pamela. And we are Pamela Jones, yeah. We reside at 5520 Briarwood Lane. And our desire is to convert our existing single-family home, which is approximately 2,788 square feet, and into two sections. The front section, which was, thank you very much, as the slide shows, Unit A, out for the sake of discussion and simplicity, exists with three bedrooms, two bath, living room, dining room, den, large kitchen, fireplace. And the back section, which was intended for in-law suite, which is a separate living room, master bedroom, another bed, an additional bedroom, a large bath, and it was kind of like a laundry room or kitchen. And for us, when we lived in the home, we pretty much just stayed in the back, and we had all the front with nobody living in it. So we downsized because it was the size of the home. This home complies, well, it sits on approximately 0.3 acres of land located at Briarwood Lane, and the property is in the General Residential zoning district. I'd like to add in advance that according to the proposed changes, the only change we'll make is the single driveline added to the right-hand side adjacent to the existing property. That feature does not change the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, it comes more like existing neighborhoods in the neighborhood, in the immediate neighborhood, because it's one of the few homes that does not have dual driveways or extended paths for a driveway. And from the outside configuration, there's no need to change anything that already exists. And it will provide affordable housing for a family. And just like we initially said, the back section was more than enough room for my wife and I. And so combined collectively, it's part of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan. And we aren't trying to do anything different than continue to provide affordable housing for families that might be in need. I'm not going to talk much more. I can answer any questions that you might have to support my application.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Jones, Commissioner Hines?
Good afternoon. Thank you for your presentation and packet. So naturally, doing a little bit of research ahead of the meeting here, it appears that there has either been an action of already renting out this as a duplex kind of situation already as a duplex kind of situation already, or the intent thereof. So has, because it does look like it's been listed on a couple of different sites as rental property for, you know, of the 1,800-square-foot area and 1,000-square-foot area. Is there, has there been any action already taking place in that regard? Or am I misreading these several websites?
No, sir. What you, what, we thought it would be no different than renting a room for the space when we initially started. So we did like a market analysis to determine the affordability. We found at that time, the house is approximately, is valued at approximately $411,000. The cost, estimated cost to rent it was estimated by the professional website, Zillow, states that they would ask me $2,800. So I knew that it being an older home, much sturdy and firm, that's why I fixated on that, that it was a lot of house for a family, and $2,800 to rent the home, most, we found that most people could not or did not want to pay it. And that was when we had decided to live on the property in the back, you know? So that's what you're probably seeing or referring to with regards to the past. Now, we did make a provision for a family to live in the home, and they were based on a state-funded program. They had participated in a state-funded program where they lived in the home.
May I just ask a clarification on that?
Yes, Commissioner.
So you are saying that this has operated as a rental in the past under a state-funding program?
State, yes, sir, under a state-funded program.
So, but never as a duplex?
No.
So you haven't had, you've had yourself there and someone else?
Yeah.
So in essence, two tenants, basically, the owner and the person that was-
Yeah, we kind of started out, we kind of started out that way, but we found that the state, you know, being in the federal program, required them to live in the whole home, so we decided to purchase another home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jigots?
Yes.
Ms. Jigots, will you turn your microphone on? Microphone. We want to be able to hear you.
No, you don't. Anyway. Mr. and Ms. Jones, I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And you mentioned a state-funded program. What is the exact name of it?
The exact name?
Of the program that you're referring to?
Rent Relief.
What is it called?
Rent Relief Virginia Rent Relief Program.
Were you going through that program through the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority? Or?
No, ma'am, that was the family that came to me and asked me with their attorney, could they participate in the state-funded program? And I agreed, because it was a family with, I think they had five, five children at the time. One was on the way. And I, I'm a dad myself with six daughters and a son, and I came from a large family myself, seven brothers and three sisters. And I know the difficulty that my family had trying to provide housing. And that house was enough room for each of the children, so I-
They stayed in this property right here?
Yes, ma'am. My sacrifice then afforded them the opportunity to live there.
And just for clarity's sake, you and your wife presently live at this property?
No, ma'am.
Right, I thought I heard that you all had moved.
Yes.
So you have moved.
Yes, ma'am.
And so then both, if this is approved, there will be two separate families going into this property?
There could be an opportunity, because it exists as an in-law suite. The back was built initially. As a matter of fact, I bought the house from one of the directors of the planning office. That's where I purchased it from. Then, and at the time of purchase, it was, I was informed, you have an in-law suite in the back. Yes. And that's why, so I'm, I'm here now just trying, after finding that you can't rent rooms, you gotta go through this process, that, that's why I've chosen to submit my application in coordination to be, to participate in the Bill 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? No? Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Jones, we appreciate it.
God bless you, and thank you very much. It's a pleasure to meet you all.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-14. I do have a few speakers. As I call your name, please come forward, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Our first speaker is Rick Mark. Mitch?
Yes, ma'am.
Come forward, sir, thank you.
My name is Rick Mitch, and I live at 5521 Briarwood Lane. I have lived there since March of 1996. First, I want to say that I'm quite conflicted standing here. Robert and his family were great neighbors. I have no animus, no vendetta. I wish the best for him. This is about protecting the investment that I've made in my home, and it's the biggest investment that I have. It should be noted that, for clarity's sake, you mentioned, was the house ever rented or advertised prior to this, about four to six weeks ago? He started advertising it as a duplex. We picked it up, looked at how much each of those units we're going to rent for. Point two, that property about two years ago, when Robert moved out, was rented out as a duplex. Two young men rented the back property, and the family that he mentioned moved into the front property. And I'm here to express my concern about this variance and not having a duplex across the street. And I have several reasons for it. The first is, if you pass this, it's going to be rental property into perpetuity. I'm going to be living across from rental property. And that's not what I purchased my home for. I moved into a single-family neighborhood, and that's what I would like it to stay. It also sets a bad precedence for other homeowners who want to do the same. You know, chopping up their properties to create rental property is not good for the neighborhood. In fact, the property right next to his was a rented by, room rental. And I had problems for years with drunken public, drunken public, drug use, domestic violence, call after call to the police. So I'm very well aware of what happens when you have renters versus homeowners. Mr. Jones came to me and asked me what I thought about this some time ago, about making it a duplex, and I brought two points to his attention. One, when you had two young men living in the back and the family out front, the fellow that lived in the front with his family, and when he moved in, he had four cars. The fellow in the back, they each had a car, and they had a work truck. This presented a parking nightmare for my family, trying to get in and out of our driveway. It also created safety concerns, because if you look back at one of the previous, you could see the fire hydrant. They would park in front of it, I could call the police, and I got zero response on that. So it's a public safety hazard, as well as all the cars parked out on the street, creating a choke point for emergency vehicles. That's a safety issue for the entire neighborhood. The other issue that I asked Mr. Jones to consider when he told me about this was maintaining professional management services for the property. And the reason that I said that is the family that he spoke to that lived in the front didn't care about the property at all. They didn't maintain it. The adult male there had a Mustang with no mufflers, and at any time, day or night, he would race down the street 50 miles an hour, wide open, waking up everybody. No concern for their neighbor's safety, no concern for the fact that we may have kids that are trying to sleep. You know, and also, it's going to be not just the parking issue, it's going to be twice everything. There's going to be twice the recycle bins, twice the trash cans, twice the mailboxes, all out in front of my house. I have a front-row seat to all of this. Not too long ago, the assessment of my house was raised, okay? And my taxes. Putting a duplex across the street for me is going to decrease my resale value. And if I see, and if we end up with neighbors like he had last time, trashing the front yard, racing up and down the street, it's going to be hard for me to sell that house in the future.
Sir.
Yes, ma'am.
We've got a minute left, please.
A minute left?
Thank you.
It's going to decrease the value of our neighborhood. I don't want to repeat it the last two years, ma'am. And like I said, I'm very conflicted standing here telling you this, because I think the world of Robert. But I don't want my value of my home and property that I've worked so hard to go down because of this, and the other safety issues that I've addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mitch.
Our next speaker, Dawn Hughes. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Dawn Hughes, and my family and I live at 5525 Briarwood Lane, across the street from the Jones house. It's kind of on an angle. I was going to start by addressing my concerns on the home listed as an apartment in a duplex already, but Commissioner Hines has already addressed that. I just want to say, we have had the pleasure of knowing many families from the Briarwood block in the 23 years that we have lived there, Mr. Jones being one of them. He took pride in his home and his yard for the short time that he resided on Briarwood Lane. Mr. Jones has stated that he has no desire to sell the house, as he would like to pass it to his children. While this is a nice idea, if the house becomes a duplex, it will always be investment property. It'll fall to waste with dirt yards and tree-filled gutters, as it was almost last year. Other homes will follow in the neighborhood. The neighborhood will no longer be one of the most desirable parts of our city. I'd ask you to please consider the potential impact on our property resale. A single-family brick home ranches are an important part of the overall visual appearance or appeal of our neighborhood. Converting the ranch-style home is not the appropriate approach to this particular neighborhood. While we cannot stop Mr. Jones from renting the house, we respectfully ask the planning department to keep the beautiful brick ranch family home as it is intended. But I also would like to mention the, we, no matter what, we have no control over who rents the home. But I was witness to the back tenant and the front tenant already arguing within the first month about what goes into the waste can, what goes into the recycle bin. That back tenant moved out shortly after. I don't think they had a good relationship. I also want to mention that when they park three cars, one of them was broke down. When you park two other cars in that single-car driveway, if someone is parked on that side, they cannot exit the driveway if two other cars are there. Therefore, their big vehicle, she would, the other renter, would come out of the driveway on the left. She hit the mailbox, ran it over. The other tenant decided to make the neighbor on the left his personal driveway without permission. So he exited the yard and exited out the neighbor's driveway. Again, we have no control of who rents the house, but we are desperately asking that you consider to keep it a single-family home as it was intended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes.
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Karen Ward. You have five minutes, up to five minutes.
I'm also another neighbor in Briarwood. I own my home with a lot of these people. We've lived here for 20-some years. We like our neighborhood. We'd like to keep it single-family homes for the reason that people care more about their property if they're a single-family home, living in them. I know that he said he wants to make it affordable, and that would be nice, but we live in our neighborhood for the reason that we want single-family homes, neighborhoods our kids can play in, run the street, not have to worry about four or five cars where they can't see. We want to be able to protect each other, know who we are, I mean, know our faces. We walk our blocks, we walk our dogs, we love our neighborhood. Like I said, we chose to live in Portsmouth for 20-some years. I have 23 other residents, some of them that have lived here 50 years in their home, 47 years, 25 years, 35 years. We're all longtime residents. We just would like to keep our neighborhood nice as it has remained all these years. That's all we're asking. I mean, it's not a duplex, it's a family, single-family home dwelling. You don't allow us to build up on garages and make them, you know, un-presentable, because you don't like the neighborhood to look bad. But our neighborhood doesn't look good with driveways everywhere, people crossing across the yard, trash cans out in the street. I mean, I'm just asking. We want to live where you want to live. Thank you.
Ms. Ward, if I may, did you want the commissioners to have a copy of that paperwork?
Yes, please.
You can give it to me.
You can.
You can bring it up, and I'll make a copy at the-
Thank you.
End of the meeting, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hines?
Madam Chair, before we take any action on that, can that be either copied or circulated before we make that vote?
We have to. I would need to stop the meeting if everybody wants a copy, because I would need to go-
I really don't need a copy, I'd just like to see it as it is a exhibit, if we can.
Do you want to take five? Okay. Commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that we take five minutes to review what Ms. Ward provided us, and then come back at 2 o'clock. Anybody like to make a motion?
I believe we take a five-minute recess at the chairman's request to allow us to review this documentation as presented.
Anybody second? All right, Ms. Jigots, second. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Commissioner Hines, did you have an opportunity to, or commissioners?
I appreciate you making the accommodation for us to be able to see this as we deliberate. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Are there any questions?
I assume we have more speakers at this point?
Yes, we do. I just want to make sure you have a question about this. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-14. If there's anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register to speak, and you would like to, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Irma Skates, and I live at 5501 Springwood Drive. My question is, and can anybody here answer, will it drive down the value of our property to have a duplex in the neighborhood that's for single homes? How does, how will that affect the property around it? Know what, can anybody answer?
Me personally, if you turn it into a duplex, I mean, there is a market, in my humble opinion, for rentals. Rentals like houses at this moment are really hard to find.
Understood.
And so I could see where it would be an attractive property for rentals.
I understand that for rentals, however, how would it be, how would it affect the homes, the property of the homeowners around the duplex?
The ability to use it as a duplex would probably give it more value, because the most typical buyer, in my humble opinion, would be an investor. It would never be someone in most cases. Or it, I don't, I really don't think that it would have an impact on the neighbors. I think that it would make this property more valuable.
Madam Chair, if I may just interject here, I'm not sure if the line of questioning is really fair. I don't believe any of us work for the city assessor's office.
Okay.
So I think we would not be uniquely qualified to answer that question, speaking only for myself. So there's, that's the best way I can answer for you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hines.
Okay, all right. So at this point, we don't know if it'll decrease the value of our homes or drive it up, right? Okay. That's, that was really my concern, having a rental duplex, along with the other things that some of the other people who have already spoken said. Because rentals really don't care about the property like a homeowner's. Homeowners seem to take care of the yards better and the house better, which I'm sure Mr. Jones would take care of the property. But rentals, some rentals, I shouldn't-
But renters, some renters, I shouldn't say all, some of them, they rent and that's all they, they care about. They don't care about anything else. So that was really my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gates.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-14. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
She didn't say a word last time.
Good afternoon. My name is Pamela Jones. I'm the wife of Robert Jones. We reside at 3524 Carter Road, in the same vicinity of this beautiful home that we're speaking of today, 5520. I believe where we live is called Siesta Gardens, and where the 5520 Briarwood home is, is called Belvedere. But I walked the neighborhood, it's a beautiful neighborhood. We searched for our home from marrying. I did live and enjoy the home for three years. As my husband mentioned, it was just too big. So we wanted, he wanted to keep the home so that there's legacy should his children ever face any type of homelessness or grandchildren, great-grandchildren. Therefore, he thought of renting the home to a family that would be in need, since none of his biological children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren need the home at this time. So as some of the current neighbors mentioned, it is a beautiful neighborhood, there's a school in walking distance of the neighborhood. I've walked the neighborhood now. I enjoy seeing families walk the neighborhood. I enjoy hearing the children's laughter at the school practicing for their extracurricular activities, and seeing them on the baseball, football field that's adjacent to Churchland Elementary. The whole point of this rental was to provide the opportunity for less fortunate family that couldn't afford to buy a home in a neighborhood such as this, to enjoy the quality of the school, the quality of the streets, the quality of being able to walk through the neighborhood without having any concern. I've called the police, too. I called the police, live in three blocks from this house, when there was gunshots being fired, and it wasn't 4th of July. So there's no perfect world. There's no perfect neighborhood. There's no perfect person. When you rent, you take on the risk of renting to people that come in. Again, they were in a state-funded program, they were vetted by this state program called Rent Relief, that this family of eight could not afford to live there otherwise. And we did the best we could to make them comfortable, to respect their privacy, and we've made changes that we have gotten approved by a lawyer to be over the maintenance of the property, et cetera. Okay? So there has been a trial and error period. Again, the whole emphasis is to comply, and we didn't know that the city had started this Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan to encourage homeowners such as Robert that have the surplus to consider renting to those that are less fortunate, and provide for them an opportunity to have what some of us take for granted. As far as the parking, the neighbors that are here, some of them do not have adequate parking for all of their vehicles, so it's not just the tenants that were parking on the street. You can drive down Briarwood any time of the day, and you'll see cars parked up and down the street from the homeowners as well. Perhaps they don't want to extend the driveway and incur the cost that my husband is going to incur to comply with the City of Portsmouth regulations.
Ma'am, you have one minute left. Thank you.
Okay, so just to wrap things up, it's a genuine, not get-rich-quick scheme, it's a genuine provision that my husband has taken into consideration of a home he fell in love with, that his family didn't need, and he just wants to provide an opportunity for someone else to enjoy the beautiful home that we enjoyed. And I with him three years, and he has enjoyed for eight years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Commissioner Heinz?
Yes.
I mean, Jiggett's, I'm sorry.
I'd like to speak to...
Ms. Jones.
Ms. Jones, if you could come back, please, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I, I'm just curious. Were there any possibilities of you all just renting the entire home to one family rather than dividing into two, into duplex? I mean, did you think about that pathway? I guess is my question.
Yes, we thought about that, and again, there is, it's almost 3,000 square feet, so there would be a home that most people can't afford to rent. They can't afford to pay all of the utilities that it would incur, as well as some people just don't want a big home, such as a 3,000-square-foot home. So that's what the interest was, for them to look at renting a smaller portion. You know, you can have a single mom with one child. You know, that's a lot on a single mom with one child that wants to rent a 3,000-square-foot home. It was too much for two of us, for the two of us. We were like, our children are grown, for the most part, we just have one in college, and nobody wants to come back and live in beautiful Portsmouth, they are glad to visit. So we just would like, made the decision to buy a smaller home ourselves.
The reason I wanted to get a little bit more information, because previously I served on the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority Board, and when you mentioned rent relief, just rent relief, I wasn't familiar with that as a component, but we do have a program called Section 8 Housing, where we are, as a housing authority, wanting landlords who have properties that they would be willing to rent to a family that holds what they call a Section 8 voucher, which means the majority of the rent would be paid by the federal government. And under that particular scenario, there are enforcement guidelines and strict adherence that would be required for the tenant, as well as for the landlord. So I didn't know if you all had delved into that, or you just decided you wanted to try to take your beautiful home and turn it into duplex?
Well, with the Rent Relief Program that Robert participated in, again, some of the speakers are against that. They, both, that was a family that was vetted by the State of Virginia through that Rent Relief Program from the COVID Act that the federal government put in place. And, you know, it's a risk when you rent. And you just heard some of the speakers mention that they didn't care for that family, that family of eight, from newborn up to 16 years old. You had six children and a mom and dad. So you just heard the speaker say, it's almost, oh, as if they want to particularly choose who they are in the neighborhood with, as far as choose the tenants? Because that's what I heard.
Well, I guess I didn't hear that. And I don't mean to cut across you.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that those, that Section 8 program is comparable to Rent Relief.
No, 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 let me, it's not, it's not. They're two different programs.
Okay.
And the Section 8 program comes under the Department of HUD, Housing and Urban Development, and there are strict enforcement guideline requirements for the tenants that they have to comply with, as well as for the landlord, just to make sure that the landlord keeps their property up to code. But there's two different programs, and the, the Section 8 program provides you with the comfort of knowing that the tenants that will be occupying your property, they have to adhere to federal guidelines at all times in order to be able to occupy your property. So there is, there is a difference, and that's why I raised the question, because if I'm not mistaken, when you talked about the family of eight, was there also an additional family in, in the house at that time, or just the one family of eight?
They, they lived there in that, that home beyond their lease, which the State of Virginia, and I know you're saying HUD is different.
Yes.
The State of Virginia did not pay for them to live there.
Right.
Until August. My husband incurred, incurred that mortgage as well. And that's something out of his control. I'm sure Section 8 is a good program. I have family members that participated in that. It was a booster start for them to become homeowners, is something that we would have to consider. But I, I'm sure we'll be right back in here with some of these neighbors who are, as you heard, they are more concerned with keeping the neighborhood full of homeowners versus tenants. So, you know, it's no perfect homeowner, there's no perfect tenant. So, you know, I am aware of the Section 8 program, but again, you can have all the rules that you want, there's no sure thing as far as who you get in your home. It's just a risk you take.
Well, certainly, thank you for your, for your comments. I do say to the homeowners, I applaud you, because in this world that we live in today, we want to have the, the protection and comfort of knowing that the American dream is still a good dream, and that is to own your own home. That's what, that's what, that's what we all aspire to.
We looked all over the 757 and came right back to Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones, if you would just hold on one second, I believe Commissioner Heinz has a question for you.
I do have...
Thank you.
Actually, I do have a, just a follow-up question. You said that there was a family of eight. Was the family of eight in the 1,800 square foot, or was the family of eight spread between the two areas that were already there?
They were in the entire home.
So the entire home of what would be described now as Unit A and Unit B?
Correct.
Okay. Because I kept on hearing that there was two separate people renting, and that's where I was confused at, but it was actually one renter that spread over both contemplated units of A and B.
They were in the entire home.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-14. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Freeman Ward, and I don't have a lot to say, but nobody in the neighborhood is against renting, because there's several houses in the neighborhood rented. It's just a duplex part that we are against. I mean, that's like, you know, we, we own our home, but that's like me wanting to turn my garage into an apartment and adding on to it, and moving out of our house and moving into another neighborhood and renting both parts out. You know, our neighbors don't want us to do that. So that's just what we're here to try to stop, because once it starts, it's just going to be a chain reaction, and we don't want that to happen. And nobody's against the rentals. You know, we just don't want the whole neighborhood to become a duplex, you know, community, and that's basically it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to speak? State your name and your address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Hi, I am Tracy Mitch. I live at 521 Briarwood. And I have a unique perspective, because I live directly across the street. When I open my front door, I look at the duplex that is being asked to be changed to. So when I look out, I'm going to see a lot of the things that go over there. And as, like you said, you know, you can't pick who your renters are. But some of the information that the Joneses said to you was not what we've known all this two years we've been living across the street from renters. And some of the things that he shared with me and my husband, you know, about the court battles, about getting paid, and about, uh, it's got to be, he's got to make enough money to make money. And, and like I said, that's all good, of course you want to make money, but it's at the, it's at the quality of our living space as homeowners. So, yes, we, we can't keep you from renting. I may want to rent one day, you know? So I'm not saying it's renting, it's, it's, it's the fact that the neighborhood was built with the infrastructure of single-family homes, maybe six kids. But in this case, and if this is true, what he's saying, that there were eight in the front, and he keeps on, they keep on talking about there wasn't anybody in the back, or they keep hoping you'll forget that part. But there was actually two grown men living in the back. At the same time, these eight people are living in the front. And then they had people, you know, the young guys in the back, they had girlfriends, they brought their cars over, and then if, you know, everybody was there at the same time, it was a choke point for my house, because I couldn't get out of my driveway, the front of my house, and like you said, if you were looking at that picture, picture my house, my driveway is practically diagonal to his driveway. So when I'm trying to back out of my driveway, and he's got his two driveways there, what do you think that's going to be like? Now, everybody has a lot of cars nowadays, I can't say anything, because we have a lot of cars, but we keep our cars in the back. And if all this goes on, and he's able to put potentially two families, and he's got, what is it, two bedrooms he says he has? That's two kids, two adults. Then he's got another big family in the front, because he says it's so big that, you know, you can't, you got to have a big family. That is a lot of people taking up a lot of space that wasn't built for that. Those houses were built for, you know, three-bedroom houses, you know, they were like, you know, two kids and the parents, not for that type of, of people in there. And that's the whole thing with the, the low to medium density. And that's all we're asking, is to keep it at a low-medium density. The Joneses were great runner, oh, great homeowners. We, like I said, we, we had pleasantries all the time. We went over their house when they got married. Great people. And I understand that the house is too much for them, but to say that a 3,000-square-foot house is not rentable, because people can't, don't want that much, that is not true. Because that neighborhood we have in has got an eclectic amount of square footage in there. Anything from 1,800, 1,500, 3,000. I mean, it, it, there, there wasn't a builder that came in and did cookie-cutter houses, and they're all the same. There's a bunch of different style houses in there, and that's great. All we are asking is that, just to keep it like it is. You know, to say that a family's going to come in there and that 3,000 is too much, who has ever said that that is too much? Especially if it's, if it, if you're actually trying to rent to families, then 3,000 ain't too much when you've got little kids running around. But what it is, is that, and I hate to say this, because it sounds like I'm being ugly, but he, 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 right, he's, he's going to have a harder time in this port, side of Portsmouth to get that run income for 3,000 square foot. That's all of what it's about. People who are in this, in this economic environment, this, they can't get that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, you've got about 30 seconds left.
Okay, well, that's, I mean, that's really all I wanted to address, is that the density to what our neighborhood can handle for emergency vehicles and just cars and people. We're just, the, the street just isn't big enough to, for what they want to do. So I thank you for listening to me, and we look forward to hearing what your decision is.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application? You can come forward, state your name and your address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Commissioner Heinz?
I believe the applicant would actually like to say a few things. I believe the applicant would actually like to say a few things if it's the will of the group to hear from him again.
He already had his opportunity, but if you make it short, I'm sure that we would be okay with that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
Throughout the whole, the theme throughout the whole thing is that it changed, that it'll change the community.
Mr. Jones, if you, yes, sir, please, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. They're saying that it'll change the community. The only change it'll be to the community is that I'll have two driveways at my house like most people in the community. It's, it's, it's no different than if you had a, a family, a large family. I came from a large family. That size house would, would have still been not really enough, but barely enough. But the, the, the point that they're trying to make is that it'll impact their house, but it's no different than me trying to have a driveway somewhat equal to the existing homes that are there from the outside. They don't, they, they, Mitch didn't say that his son enjoys the liberty of occasionally parking in my single driveway, you know? That's something that's important. And as far as the price, it, it's no different. It, it won't change anything about the neighborhood. As a matter, as a matter of fact, it'll enhance. So I just want to make the point that, I just want to keep in mind, and, and they're talking about renters, the property is not renters' property, it's still my property, no matter what.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Ladies and gentlemen, is there anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address? You may come forward, sir. State your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. No?
I'm just going to, I spoke already. I just want to, I want to address something that my-
Sir, I'm sorry. We, we can't do this. You've had an opportunity, respectfully, you've had five minutes to speak. The applicants come back. So thank you very much. Commissioners? Any questions? Y'all good? Okay.
Is there anyone else who has not spoken, who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application? You may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner Hines?
I, I will be making a motion, but I also would like to give, first thank the applicants for, for going through the process with us. It's an exhaustive process at times. And also to thank the citizens who not only have cared enough to write emails, but also to provide us 19 unique addresses that are in this neighborhood, not just the, the people that lived, you know, four or five to a house, but there were actually 19 unique addresses, which, you know, pretty much is a good cross sample of, of, of the neighborhood. So thank you for being civically involved to bring this information to us. Members of the Planning Group, if we can maybe include that into the council package as well, I think that's a useful piece of information. I've always believed that we should protect the integrity of neighborhoods. And while the neighborhood, the, the physical appearance does not look like it will change much, it does impact the character of, of said neighborhood. It also begins a process of setting precedent for a changing of single families to possibly more evasive practices of changing them into duplexes, which will next time potentially change the appearance. I believe Mr. Jones has all the right reasons for this. However, I think precedent is, is important here. With that being said, I am going to make a motion that we deny UP-23-14.
I second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
We have a motion and a second to deny UP-23-14. Commissioners, you will be voting electronically.
The lights not coming.
Hold on one second, guys. One second. We had to change roles. By, uh, Jiggetz, Commissioner Jiggetz. That's okay, you're good. Okay, now. This item is denied by a vote of four to one. Thank you. Our next item is UP-23-15 Downtown Time on the River LLC requests a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment on approximately 0.619 acre parcel located at One High Street, Suite 4, in the downtown D1-T6 Urban Core zoning sub-district. The future land use map of the Builds One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed use downtown. The property is owned by One High Street LLC and is further described as Tax Map 2 Parcel 17. Will the applicant or the representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gabby McClay. I am a representative for Time on the River LLC. It is a Caribbean and Cajun Creole restaurant that is located in the Seaboard Building here in Portsmouth. We are requesting or petitioning for an entertainment license so that we can follow the rules and regulations that set forth by the city of Portsmouth. Specifically, we are petitioning because we would like to offer karaoke night, one night out of the week, maybe a Wednesday or Thursday during what we consider happy hour, which would be, let's give her, say, 5:30 to maybe 8:30 in the evening PM hours. And also, we are petitioning because during the spring and summer months, we would like to offer our patrons a live band or maybe a cellist to come and perform while there is dining on the outdoor premises of the restaurant, as well as the patrons on the inside can, you know, enjoy the, the entertainment as well. So that's basically everything.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you all actually, in addition to notifying the association, the, did you, the condominium association, did you have the opportunity to speak with the individuals in the building also?
We did not petition the tenants of the Seaboard Building. However, I did get permission, and I do have full backing from the management company, which is the same company that we leased from, which is One High Street LLC. We do have, we are going to honor their wishes because it's a part of our lease as well. So that's pretty much everything in the gist. And we did not go directly individually to each tenant, but everyone is aware that there's a restaurant, and this is our goal.
I guess my concern is with this particular venue at the Seaboard, where you do have individuals who actually live on top of the building, would I be correct, and I guess I'll make this question to my planning director, there would be no way to actually have soundproofing of anything because everything would be outside? Am I correct?
Well, actually, it would, for, when there's no inclement weather, it is our goal to have a small live band. They are a cellist on the outside of, or the patio area where we have the outdoor dining permit. However, we are also entertaining the idea of letting it be done inside of the venue as well. So it's, it's just based upon what we deem the weather. Mostly, it's going to be based on the weather. Did I answer your question?
You answered, but I still need to have some input from the planning staff because, if I'm not mistaken, because we had a similar situation further down the street, but that was going to be all inside. And so there's soundproofing on the back door and the front door. And I'm just trying to understand for when you're inside with your entertainment, what type of soundproofing would be required? If you can answer that, please.
The same soundproofing that was required at the other location at the entrance and exit would be required at this site.
At this one, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And please remember that the, the, the city for years had the Thursday afternoon functions in front of Number One High Street.
Yes, I hear that. But I also heard that during inclement weather, their entertainment would be pulled inside.
Yes, ma'am.
And so obviously, my concern is for the condo residents. And I, and I spoke to it earlier because the condo association was informed, but I would have had a greater comfort level if the individual condominium owners had also been informed that this was coming. Thank you, though.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Commissioner Hines?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can take just a moment of, of personal question here. Any idea when you're planning on opening the venue here?
It is, we are still up in the air about that. It will be definitely within the next three to three and a half weeks. It will be before Labor Day that we do anticipate having the doors fully open, be it that we have received all of our permits from Virginia ABC. We have the permits from the city of Portsmouth to operate on the interior and exterior of the building. So pretty much everything is ready to roll. It's just us making sure that we have all of our ducks in a row when it comes down to our employees.
Yeah, I haven't had really good gumbo since New Orleans, so.
Well, I promise you, you'll be able to come get some.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-15. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes.
Hello again. I'm Pamela Jones, 3524 Carter Road, Portsmouth 23703. I am very interested in having a variety of, an outing for my husband and I to attend. I'm really interested in seeing this Time on the River come to fruition. We need a variety. Right now, we just have, from my knowledge, maybe five venues that play music outside of the Thursday event that Portsmouth Parks and Rec puts on in the summer. So I hope that you all consider this as something that the citizens need to keep our money here in Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who did not get an opportunity to register that would like to address this application? Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there? Commissioner Hines?
Yes, Madam Chair. I may issue a motion that we approve a UP-23-15 with the conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes.
Just give them a minute so they can get the, okay.
Got it.
You'll be voting electronically.
Somebody didn't vote.
This item is approved by a vote of four to one.
Madam Secretary, I believe that concludes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, would there be any further business? If none, Ms. Adenwa, is there any further business? None? Okay, thank you. If there is none, this hearing is now, the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.